I'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting and duly posted meeting of the Harlingen City Commission order. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Victor Liao to lead us in an invocation.
Let us pray. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Heavenly Father, we give thanks for the blessings that you have bestowed upon our city.
Thank you, Father God.
Please bless us with wisdom as we deliberate the business of this city. Please protect our employees as the work that they do of this city and allow them to glorify you in what they say and what they do. All these things we pray in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Hallelujah.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I am pledging allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. We're glad to have you at our meeting tonight. We hope that we can do this in an efficient manner and that everyone will get a chance to participate. Item 1A is the, for one, is the public announcement of events. So, we're going to briefly run through some of the upcoming things that are going to be happening here in Harlingen.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Commissioner Gonzalez. I'm here to report to you on upcoming events for the city of Harlingen. The HUB is having their Thanksgiving feast on Friday, November 22 at the Harlingen Community Center at 11:00. Everyone is invited to go and enjoy a nice meal sponsored by HUB. We have the annual lighting. This is our 27th annual. It's at McKelby Park at 6:00 on Thursday, December 5. And our Christmas parade is the following day, which is sponsored or hosted by the RGV J.C.'s at Jackson Street downtown at 7:00. There's also a phone-5K presented by Mid Valley Events at the Arroyo Park. That's on December 7. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Item A is the Salvation Army 2013 Christmas Scout Campaign in April tree program, November 29 through December 24, 2013. We're going to welcome the Watts up here to tell us about their campaign. Want to recognize all of the Salvation Army Board members and other representatives of the Salvation Army who are here in the audience. I want to thank them for being here with us, too. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and City Commissioners. We are grateful for this opportunity to present to you our Christmas effort, the Christmas Kettle Campaign. And each of you, I believe, has one of these. And our advisory board members are handing them out to the audience here as we speak. The Christmas Kettle Campaign goes back to 1891. It really wasn't started as a fundraising effort, but that's what it turned into. And I know that the mayor and two of our commissioners, Commissioner Newhorn and Commissioner Liao, are going to be ringing the bell for the Salvation Army. And it's a really great opportunity for people just to go out and help raise money for the Salvation Army by ringing the bell. It's really a lot of fun. A lot of people think, well, you know, standing on your feet, you know, your back's going to hurt, whatever. But really, it's so much fun. It's really contagious, you might even say. You do it once for an hour, then you want to do it another day and another day. So, I just would invite the rest of the city commissioners and even people in the audience to sign up to be a volunteer bell ringer. And then Captain Dolores Watts, my lovely spouse here, is going to tell you about our Angel Tree Program.
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you. Thank you so much for your support of the Salvation Army for a little over 85 years. And I just thank this community so much for their efforts. I do want to mention, too, your Angel Tree Program that began in 1979 in Virginia and is still in function today. This program is great because it is able to provide new clothing, new shoes, and one new toy for a needy child at Christmas. And this is just a wonderful event because some children would not have a Christmas if it wasn't for the Angel Tree Program. So, I encourage you to partner with the Salvation Army and to purchase Christmas for a needy child this year.
Yes, this year, we have over 1,000 children in Cameron County that have applied to get the gifts through the Angel Tree Program. And also, this year, because of the way the calendar falls, Thanksgiving is a week later. So, we have six less days to secure the gifts for the children of our community. So, we really need the help of the community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Again, we thank all the board members and volunteers, the other members of your staff who are here tonight. And they're great pillars of our community. They've supported the Salvation Army for a long time, and as you say, a long time in our community. Salvation Army fulfills a very important mission within our community, and so we'll all get out and help support your campaign this year, okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, proclamation proclaiming November 16th and 24th, 2013 is National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. And we've got some folks that are going to come up here. Detective with this is Bill Reagan with Detective Director Most efficient people from my [inaudible]. Homeless coordinator, the [inaudible]. Mr. Zika Telkamp. Mr. Margaret [inaudible]. Mr. Marlene McLean. And Abel Morales. Okay. Great. Just get right to it. We'll read the proclamation. Whereas for the past several years, the National Coalition for the Homeless and National Student Campaign against Hunger and Homelessness has sponsored National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. And whereas the purpose of this proclamation is to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless, including the shortage of affordable housing, the city of Harlingen for very low-income residents, and the urge for homeless assistance service providers as well as community service opportunities for students and school and service organizations. Whereas there are many organizations committed to sheltering, providing supportive services as well as meals and food supplies to the homeless, including Los Deficiences, Grand Valley Family Crisis Center, the [inaudible] Housing Authority, Brown's Community Health Clinic, Catholic Charities, Food Bank, Grand Valley, United Way of Northern Cameron County, Area Agency on Aging, the Negro Soviet, Cameron County Children's Aid and Detention Centers, Trump Effects Behavioral Health, Tring Path Debt Solutions, Workforce Solutions, Cameron, Department of Health and Human Services Commission, [inaudible]. Texas Rehabilitation Commission, [inaudible]. Assistant Rehab Services to VA Texas Valley [inaudible]. Women, Infant, Children, [inaudible]. Ministries, Aitken Harrison Church of Christ, the Neighborhood Food Package, Lions Club of Harlingen, Harlingen Development Corporation, and the Valley AIDS Council. And whereas the theme of the National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week 2013 is Bring America Home, and whereas the intent of the National Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week is consistent with the activities of Cameron County Homeless Partnership, whereas the city of Harlingen recognizes that hunger and homelessness continues to be a very big problem for many individuals and families in the city of Harlingen, and therefore, I respectfully, Mayor of the city of Harlingen, do hereby proclaim November 16 through 24, 2013, is National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. The city of Harlingen encourages all citizens to recognize that many people do not have housing and need support from citizens and public private nonprofit service entities. So, who gets this? We want to express our thanks to each of you and all of the organizations and entities that you represent and all the others that I've read there in the proclamation for the work that you do to help with this issue. Every community has its issue, not just in Harlingen, but we recognize that we have this issue in Harlingen, too, and we need to do something about it. So, you all are the people that are helping us do something about it. Congratulate you and thank you for the work that you do. Got it? Okay. Thank you. We're going to pass item 3 until the city manager gets back to talk to us about that item. Item 4 is the approval of the minutes for November 1, 2013, the Joint Special Meeting of the City Commission and Harlingen Community Improvement Board, November 6, 2013, and Special Meeting of the City Commission and Harlingen Community Improvement Board, November 6. The regular meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Hearing now, I'll ask [inaudible] motion to approve all three sets.
That's something.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. I'm going to take items, the consent agenda, just item 5A and 5C, and I'll take 5B separately. So, let's go to item 5A and 5C. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, just item 5A and 5C?
So, who, Mayor?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're going to go to item 5B. Commissioner Liao is going to excuse himself. Consider to take action to approve an agreement with Los Deficiences in the amount of $50,000 to provide meals to the homeless and needy.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion in our budget? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Suppose like, sign, motion carries. All right. Somebody left a [inaudible]. Item 6 is public hearing, consider an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow a bar lounge in a general retail GR district located at 304 Southeast Street, bearing legal description of Block 12, Block 85, original townsite. Now, this is Robert Rondeal.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow a bar lounge out of the existing 1,500 square foot building that's located on the corner of D Street and Harrison Avenue. This is the subject property. You can see here, D and Harrison Street. This was previously operated as a bar. The name was [inaudible]. The applicant is proposing a barn in the name of Robstown. Generally, the hours of operation would be from Sunday through Saturday from 4:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. This request was reviewed by the appropriate city departments. Neither of the departments had any objections to the request, subject to obtaining the proper permits. The police department provided incident report from the previous two years and is recommending that the applicant can provide the required licensed security guard and provide the required lighting and surveillance video with a 30-day retention of the video. This is another view you're looking at from [inaudible]. Floor plan. And as you can see, this is a dirt lane across from the park, and the closest bar along this location would be about 200 feet. This is the subject location. The other bar would be, it's closest to it would be about 200 feet. We didn't notify property owners within a 200-foot radius. Staff didn't receive any objection to the request. A public hearing was also conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission. There were some concerns addressed during the meeting. Staff and P&amp;Z Commissioner recommend approval subject to the applicant providing, or subject to the bar be limited to one year, and the applicant would have to apply for renewal. In addition, the applicant would have to provide a licensed security guard during peak hours of operation, as well as provide a surveillance video with 30-day retention video, as well as also maintain the proper permits and comply with the requirements of appropriate city departments. I'll take any questions, and the applicant is also present for questions.
I'm going to go to item A, which is a public hearing. A public hearing. Is anyone like to speak for or against this special use permit? Is there anyone? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing. Go to item B, which is considered to take action to approve of the adopted ordinance on first reading for the above mentioned specific, proposed specific use permit. I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance, ordinance number 07-27 of the city of Harlingen, issue a specific use permit issued to Robert E. Rondeal to allow a bar lounge in a general retail GR district located at 304 Southeast Street, bearing legal description of Block 12, Block 85, Harlingen, original townsite, subject to one. Initial permit shall be for one year and require renewal to continue operation. Two, providing and maintaining video surveillance within a 30-day retention of the video. Three, providing security personnel during peak hours of operation, Thursday through Saturday, 9:00 p.m. through 2:00 a.m. Four, providing adequate lighting around all building entrance exits. Five, obtaining and maintaining all proper state and TABC permits. And six, complying with the requirements administered by planning and zoning building inspectors, environmental, health, fire prevention, and police departments for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
I'll make the motion again.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If I have any questions. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Suppose like, sign, motion carries. Item 7. This is a public hearing, consider an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow a bar lounge in a general retail GR district located at 610 South Lewis Lane, bearing a legal description of 1.69 acres out of blocks 2 and 3, Lewis subdivision. The applicant is Daniel [inaudible].
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow a bar lounge out of an existing 5,500 square foot building that's located on the corner of Lewis Lane Expressway 83. This is the subject property. The previous use of the property has been a bit of bar. Prior to that, the bar was in the name of [inaudible] or Chill. And then prior to that, [inaudible]. The subject applicant also had a bar at that same location about a year or two ago. This is the floor plan of the existing bar. There's been no changes to the building. Generally, the hours of operation would be from Tuesday through Sunday from 8:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. This request is also reviewed by the appropriate city departments, and neither of the departments had any objections to the request, subject to obtaining the proper permits. Incident report was provided by the police department, and they are recommending that the applicant provide, again, surveillance video during peak hours of operations, licensed security, security guard during peak hours of operation, as well as providing the appropriate lighting on the entrance and exits of the building. Public hearing was conducted by the property owners. We didn't notify the property owners within the 200-foot radius of the property. Staff didn't receive any objections to the request. Public hearing was conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission, and staff has recommended approval subject to the applicant, subject to the permit being limited to six months, and the applicant would have to apply for renewal of the permit, subject to the applicant, and also providing security personnel during peak hours of operation, providing adequate lighting, obtaining his proper permits, as well as providing surveillance video during peak hours of operation. The applicant will also have to maintain the six-foot solid fences on the south corner of the property, as well as complying with the permits from the appropriate city departments. The P&amp;Z Commission also recommended approval with those same conditions, with the additional condition that the applicant, if he had a bus which promoted the business, he had to park that bus on the southwest corner of the property. I'll take any questions, and I'll leave representatives over here for any questions.
How long does a business like this have to be closed in order for them to have to reapply for a?
There is no specific timeframe. Once it's a different applicant, that person has to come and apply for a new specific use permit.
Okay. I'll go to item A. This is a public hearing. If the public hearing is, is there anyone that would like to speak for or against this specific use permit? Hearing now, I'll close the hearing. Go to item B, which is the, consider to take action to approve or adopt an ordinance on first reading for the above mentioned specific use permit.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance, ordinance number 07-27 of the city of Harlingen, to issue a specific use permits, permit to Daniel [inaudible] to allow a bar lounge in a general retail GR district located at 610 South Lewis Lane, bearing legal description of 1.69 acres out of block 2 and 3, Lewis subdivision, subject to one. The S U P would be limited to six months. The applicant would have to apply for renewal to continue operation. Two, maintaining the required off-street parking spaces. Three, maintaining the required landscaping. Four, providing a licensed security guard in the parking lot during peak hours of operation on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from 9:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. Five, providing and maintaining adequate lighting around all bar lounge building entrance and exits, as well as on-site parking areas. Six, providing and maintaining the surveillance video in the parking lot and must maintain a 30-day retention of the video. Seven, providing and maintaining a six-foot solid fence along the south end of the property to provide a buffer from the residential use. Eight, if the applicant has a business bus used to promote the business, it must be located on the southwest corner of the property. Nine, applicant must obtain and maintain TABC license. And ten, comply with requirements administered by the planning, building, health, fire, and police departments, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there, did this, did this close due to any violation of their national S U P or?
No, the, I think the applicant took, no, the applicant took over the business. I guess the other person sold the business to the current applicant, the new applicant. It's a different applicant that bought the business.
Continued to operate.
Right. There was no close for any violation, no.
Okay. Any other questions?
The renewal process, is that the same process that they undertook right now to get their S U P?
Yes. I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
After six months, they're going to be up for renewal.
Right.
The renewal process will be the same process that they undertook to get this?
Correct. It will be advertised. We'd have to take it before P&amp;Z Commission as well as the city commission.
And everything will be reviewed again by the police department and the fire department, everybody else?
Right. Correct.
Are they advised that the Christmas parade is a family-friendly? Are they discouraged, maybe, if they're discouraged from entering the Christmas parade? Is there a motion? Of course, the motion is second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Suppose like, sign, motion carries. Item A, public hearing, consider an ordinance on first reading to rezone from residential single-family R1 district to residential duplex R2 district for Lot 14, Block 1. The Oak subdivision amended platte located at 3701 Roya Vista Court. Aplicants transpins.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property from residential single-family to residential duplex to allow for a duplex on the subject property. This is the subject property. As you can see, it's on the corner of Roya Vista Court and Mississippi Street. Surrounding land use, as you can see at the property, is currently vacant. It has about 55 feet of frontage on Roya Vista Court and a depth of about 120 feet. The surrounding land use, as you can see, is a multifamily development to the north. To the east is mainly residential, single-family residential houses. To the west, you have a mixture of duplexes and triplexes and warplexes. Along the south side of Mississippi, southwest side of the subdivision, which would be the west side of Mississippi Street, these lots are similar size to what the applicant is, similar size to the applicant's lot and similar use in that they're duplex lots. So, the lot does meet the minimum lot size for a duplex, per the ordinance, as well as others which are currently being used as duplex. So, you would be able to provide the required parking. And per the ordinance, a minimum size lot for a duplex is 6,000 square feet. This lot is about 6,700 square feet, so it does comply with the requirements for a duplex. This is a view. You're looking at from the east side. You can see there's single-family houses. From the west side, you can see there's existing duplexes. And if you look at it from the south, you can see the property's vacant. It's usually a duplex to the west, and then a house to the east, to the south, or maybe duplexes or triplexes. Future land use can potentially show this area as general retail, although it's not consistent with the future land use plan. It is a lower-intense zoning, and it is consistent with the existing land use in the area and the surrounding zoning. Public hearing was conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission. We didn't get any objections to the request. Staff and P&amp;Z Commissioner recommend approval. I'll take any questions, any applicant's present for questions.
Okay. I'll go to item A, the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak for or against this item? Is there anyone? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing. Go to item B, which is considered to take action to approve the, and adopt the ordinance on first reading for the above mentioned rezone request. Ask the city attorney to read caption.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance, the city of Harlingen, rezoning from residential single-family R1 district to residential duplex R2 district for Lot 14, Block 1. The Oak subdivision amended platte located at 3701 Roya Vista Court, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion?
I did have a question. If you want to go fast. There isn't enough parking for a duplex based on the, the, the meter feet of frontage. That's my only.
Yes, there would be, generally, for a duplex, the minimum requirement for parking is one and a half parking spaces per unit, and they would only need three spaces. There's other similar lots which are pointed out which are similar-sized lots, and they have the required parking, and they're duplex lots, which are many of these ones on the southern corner. This is a, these are the lots to the west side of Mississippi Street. They're exactly, they're actually a little bit smaller than the applicant's lot by a couple of hundred feet.
Okay.
And these are duplexes that you can see on the property, and they have required parking.
So, this would be the style that we would be, you would be using? Something similar?
Good afternoon, or good evening, Commissioner Liao. First and foremost, our intention is, if given the opportunity, we would sell a lot. If we're unable to sell a lot, then on behalf of Leon and Linda Benz, revocable trust, it would be our intention to develop a similar-style duplex. I've been considering different construction options. We would either build two two-car garages or one car garages on each side, allowing for four parking spaces facing the street. Or the final alternative is parking spaces facing the street with access to the units bearing along the long line of the property.
Okay.
There's, I'm not aware of any issues of any off-street parking issues. My parents developed the property back in the early 2000s, and we've seen this property grow, and I'm not aware of any off-site parking issues.
I didn't see any, because I drove, I drove, I just kind of noticed it looked kind of shallow. I mean, it's very deep.
Yes.
Not very wide. I'm going, how are they going to put, you know, three or four cars? And you answered it by saying, we're going to put a garage in.
Yes. Well, with the property being 55 feet wide.
Right.
The setbacks, the side setback lines are five feet on each side, leaving us 45 feet. If a garage, two-car garage is 20 feet wide, that would more or less leave us where we need to be. We could go one-car garage and door and still fit four cars across the property.
And also, they can park in a [inaudible]?
Yes, caller.
Okay. Are there any other questions? There's a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Suppose like, sign, motion carries. Item 9, consider to take action to request a variance request in the city of Harlingen subdivision ordinance, number 07-28, section 4.12B, with regards to the 4:1 lot length to width ratio on the proposed replant of Lot 1D and the replant of Blocks 1 and 2, six-shooter junction subdivision unit to locate at 2811 South Expressway 83. Aplicant Rio Surveying Company, LLC.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting a variance of the 01 lot to width ratio, basically to replant an existing commercial lot into two lots. He's basically proposing, he wants to sell each of these existing buildings on the property, and to do that, he needs to plant the lot, each of the buildings in a separate lot. So, that's why this would meet the requirements for the 4:1 measure, 4:1 ratio. Per the subdivision ordinance, the length of the lot cannot exceed the width by 4:1. In this case, I guess the hardship would be that the surrounding area is developed, and he's unable to purchase additional property to acquire that width to meet the 4:1 lot ratio. So, that would be his hardship. Staff is recommending approval, and P&amp;Z Commission is also recommending approval or request. I'll take any questions, and the surveyor representing the applicant is here, bringing questions.
Is there a motion to approve the variance?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, or the discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Suppose like, sign, motion carries. Item 10, consider to take action to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Texas National Guard for the city of Harlingen operation crackdown. Ken?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, happy to report that the National Guard is going to be coming down again this year. In fact, they've been here the last two days, reviewing all the files and making sure everything's in order, and touring all of the properties. We're going to be tearing down the homes. Media Day will be on Monday, December 16, and they'll be down here all the week before that, knocking down buildings through that following week. So, what we need to do is just have you take action to approve the MOU, then be able to come down and do that again this year.
This is such a great program for the safety of our community, and we're really fortunate to have a fortunate partnership with the Texas National Guard. And is there a motion to approve the memorandum?
I think we should be [inaudible].
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Great. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Suppose like, sign. Again, great job, so we'll, we look forward to them coming back to Harlingen. Item 11, consider to take action to approve a delivery system reform incentive payment services agreement between University of Texas Health Science Center of San Antonio and the city of Harlingen.
Mayor, Members of the Commission, University of Texas Health Science Center wants to grant the city $85,535 from the Social Security 1115 waivers. That will be used to hire a community health. That will be used to hire a community health worker to assist the city with promoting health throughout the city. This person would be housed at the Lotsi Hill building and reporting directly to Alino, our health director. Staff recommends approval. Any other questions to the?
Do we already have somebody in the capacity? Is this a brandy position?
It's a brandy position. We have interviews scheduled for tomorrow and a day after.
Okay, is there a mo, is there a motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
Fits in with the continued, fits in nicely with the continued partnership that we have with the UT Health Science Center and Iraq. So, it's a good thing for our community. Any, unless there are any other questions or comments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed like a sign. Motion carries. Item, well, consider to take action to approve or deny our request by Harlingen Football League to make improvements to the city-owned football facility in Victor Park.
Good evening Mayor, City Commissioners. As you know, all the league contracts between the city and those leagues for use of city facilities require that if the leagues want to make any sort of major improvements to those facilities, those improvements are forwarded to the commission for your approval or denial. This includes Harlingen Football League. They use the football facility at Victor Park just to get your bearings. This is the interstate to the north. This is M Street as it comes through the park. You'll be entering Tony Butler Golf Course to the south. And this is the main football complex that they use when they practice and play games on this side as well. There are two requests by the league. One of them is to install a scoreboard for which they have purchased, I believe it's about eight to ten thousand dollar scoreboard. Facility doesn't currently have one, so that would be request number one. Request number two would be to purchase goalposts for each end of the main football field for which it does not have, and the city would install those. Once the, the goalposts would be installed, they would become part of the complex owned by the city. Once the scoreboard is installed, scoreboard will be installed by the league and maintained by the league, and that is already outlined in their contract with the city. This is a picture of the scoreboard that the league has provided to us. So, it's eight feet by twenty feet. Is that the sponsorship already?
Yeah.
So, this is a scoreboard. And just so we'll know, they are planning on placing the scoreboard in this area here, the side opposite of the interstate. They are certainly conscious of the view from the interstate, not wanting to look at the back of it. Twenty-foot wide scoreboard. So, in that light, staff recommends approval of both requests.
Does anybody else use the field?
Not by contract. I believe they're, they're the sole, sole users of that, that field, yes.
And what months do they use it?
All the way there.
I mean, during football season or all year?
Yeah, they're pretty much year-round now.
Any discussion about screening that container or doing something to screen that container? You're never gonna, you're never gonna, anytime this contract comes up, you're gonna hear me complain about the container.
Well, we have moved it, obviously. This is, this is what you're talking about, and we have moved it. We can look into that definitely, yes.
Well, maybe a good location behind the scoreboard. You know, it's just not very attractive. You can see it from the, you can see it from the highway, which is-
We'll continue to-
Need to find an alternative to-
What have we done with the other, not necessarily football, but other leagues using other facilities, other park systems in the city? As far as, because I agree with the fact on the, on the container. But have there been any other alternatives supplied by the city as far as have we, have we built anything in any of the other parks?
As a screening method?
No, no, no. I'm saying to, I take it they, y'all use that container to put equipment?
For everything, for supplies, food.
Paul, the question really was for you and for staff. I guess, it's an honest question. I don't know if we've done that for other, other leagues like softball, soccer.
Have we built storage facilities?
Right, maybe they have.
No, not that I recall. Matter of fact, I think this is the league's facility. This is, that's the league's storage facility.
Okay.
Yes.
Do, do any of the other leagues have storage?
Yes, yes.
They do. And are they using the same type of storage? You just, y'all, y'all pick the closest thing to the highway until we can see it?
Oh. In other words, at the other-
Are y'all, are you using the container or is your-
We do use it. We actually provide equipment to our players, so we do use it for storage. It stores a lot of money worth of equipment. We don't like it either. It leaks, it's horrible.
If it's raining, it's raining inside there. It's, we've, our hope is to find a way to either get rid of it and build something else. We just, we're new to the board, so we haven't quite gotten there yet, but we agree with you. We hate it too.
Okay. Well, I'm not necessarily saying that's all, all your responsibility. I'm just trying to think of, like us to think of, kind of, you know, address this issue, think about what we could maybe could do. It's not gonna be a condition of the contract, so we don't have to, we don't have to discuss it, but I just, I wanted to ask the question.
Was there some better place that could be placed to be less noticeable?
We have moved it now.
You haven't moved it away to the end. At the emergency entrance down to the bottom, right there?
Right.
It's a little bit above, right there, a little bit higher, I mean, just further, right there.
Yeah, I noticed it when I came from the golf course.
You guys placed it backwards though.
Drive in where it used to be.
Well-
It's as much out of the way as it can be.
I think, I think we either, you know, find, find a, you know, we either have to build something which costs money.
We actually need something bigger because just the equipment by itself, right now that it's out, we still have some in there, but it's using like three-fourths of the space because we need the scoreboard, all the markers, the pylons, all the supplies that we use to have games every day. And then putting all the Gatorades and everything in there, it's just-
Or we, or we screen it, or we screen it with landscaping or fencing. I don't see anything I can think of. Maybe, but there may be some other solution, or maybe there's something that they would want to do jointly or-
Yeah, we'll continue to investigate that.
City to work on that issue. Well, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I guess the issue really is to approve the request to make the improvements. And as described, the stance recommendation is to approve.
Approved, yes, as submitted, yes.
Are there any other questions about it? Is there a motion to approve the- Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed like a sign. Motion carries. Okay, thank you all for your work with the, with those kids and what you do to provide a program for them. And so, thanks for your, for your volunteerism. Item 13, discussion of possible action or direction to the city staff related to Harlingen Police Department's proposed use of the oil mill pavilion at Lotsi Hill Park, African City Harlingen.
Again, Mayor and Commissioners, just on the screen to get our bearings, this is North Commerce, Fair Park Boulevard. This is the police station. This is the municipal auditorium complex. This is Harlingen Field, our baseball stadium. Behind the police department is a facility known as the oil mill complex. It is currently vacant. There are no contracted uses for it right now. As I described in your, your executive summary, the only near use is, or adjacent use would be by Gears, which is a remote control car club, which, they're awesome by the way. They use the facility adjacent and they do use, the restrooms inside. And also, the facility is used one and a half, one to one and a half days a year historically. For the Jalapeno 100, they stage their indoor, they stage their event there. What Harlingen Police Department has proposed to use this facility, I believe for- The Safety City project, which I think the commission's pretty well versed on. And so, that is a request tonight. You have a number of different options. Demand this back to the staff, kind of give us direction, those types of things. The police chief here, if you want any more information on Safety City or the proposal, or I can ask, answer any questions, but that's the issue tonight.
Does everybody know what Safety City is? Because I don't, I don't remember whether that presentation was made before.
Yeah, we know what it is, but I'm just curious like what, what role would that building fill as far as sort of that program?
Well, I, you know, I actually brought a, I have like a three-minute video if you want to, if anybody wants to see it on what Safety City is. The video is actually Abilene, and that's kind of the premier, you know, site in Texas, probably in the country. And it's actually a, a large, three-acre mock city. And that's actually our long-term goal, but what we want to do is start out with the building. You know, we brought this issue forward a couple of years ago and, you know, the expensive part of the funding is in fact the concrete or the driving surface. Safety City is pedestrian safety for, for school ages, children, eighth grades, grades third through fifth. So, it's pedestrian safety, traffic safety, vehicle safety, it's even fire safety. So, and we've already partnered with the school district. They've committed to sending third through fifth graders at a curriculum that we developed together. But inside, we're actually gonna make, and if you envision, a Hollywood set of a mock city. And so, it's gonna have roadways and road crossing signs and et cetera. So, basically teaches school age kids how to, how to follow traffic laws. And they, they even get to drive a electric go-kart so they can learn from a driver's perspective. So, it's kind of cool. And, and again, when we were saying, if we had to do that from scratch, like come up with the infrastructure, you know, the restrooms, electricity, the lighting, the classrooms, it would actually be very expensive. And this just, it's right there and it just seems like a perfect opportunity, because in fact, the building isn't being utilized.
I think, I know we've, that was a discussion a few times over the years. And I think if we have an opportunity right now to reuse that building for something associated with the city and with the police department, I think that program would be a great candidate for that. I think that'd be a good idea.
I think the only, the only thing that the discussion was is, you know, it's being utilized for the Jalapeno 100. And I had some discussions with staff about the fact that we're going now to a two-day event. And it would look so much nicer if we could use, because they're gonna do it down here at the, at the park. Why don't we use the Castellamistad for the Jalapeno 100? We're gonna start having people, they're gonna be here hopefully two days. It's a nicer-looking facility over what that oil mill looks like. You know, so I, I think if we can work out the logistics for the Jalapeno 100, make sure that the, the- The Jalapeno 100 people are comfortable with it, I think this would be a good use for that building because it's used one day a year.
That's very durable.
Huh?
That's very durable. We can do that.
Well, there's not a conflict with the calendar for the Castellamistad and the scheduling date.
We can, we're getting it in advance, just schedule these things ahead of time.
The chief said that for this year, we're, we're okay, but I still want to try to talk to the Jalapeno 100 folks to see if we can move it over to the Castellamistad or the lobby area in the auditorium. The only thing is that, that is an enterprise fund, so I'd like to allocate some funding to cover the expense similar to what we do for the boarding festival?
We have, we have funds available in public buildings to cover the cost of the event.
Okay, great. And, and actually, all they really use it is for, is the registration and feeding the riders when they come in.
Going back to the PD's use of that building, once you guys get control of that, you know, there'll be an opportunity to actually spruce it back up and make it look a lot nicer instead of there where it is right now.
And see, I had heard that they were gonna save part of the, for the Jalapeno 100 people. I'm going, no, why don't we use the whole building for the PD? Because that way, when y'all spruce it up, it's gonna be an overall spruce up.
And will also leave access to the R C Club for utilization of the bathrooms.
Bathrooms.
So, we'll, we'll make all the accommodations.
I think this is a win for everybody.
I think it's a great utilization.
Yes, sir.
I just, I have to, I did get a call from Bill Kimball and the hockey group, and they did forget, you know, he was, didn't notice it was gonna be on the agenda. He couldn't be here tonight. He did talk to me about their desire to continue, continue to use it, but he'd acknowledged that they didn't, they didn't renew their lease and didn't get that, all that stuff together, and that they had not been using it since May. I told him that the concept was to, Police Department to maybe put Safety City in, in there and that that would probably be a, I said, I didn't know what the commission was gonna do, but it seemed to me that Safety City would probably be a pretty attractive alternative to the higher, higher degree because it would be a much broader use of the facility, more, more people. It would, it would impact a larger percentage of our population and, and, and children in our community. So, I thought it would be a pretty hard, my opinion would be a hard sell to, you know, select hockey over kids.
Wait till you see the little kids on the video.
Adult roller, roller blade hockey, but I did tell him that I wouldn't mention that he called. I think that's a, I'm excited about the prospect of being able to get that project done, that this advances that. I'm all for it.
So, are we, thank you.
Is that what we wanna, is that, there's no action to be taken other than to?
Does this need to come-
It's a possible action.
Possible action. What would the action be?
That we move, advise staff to-
Right, before they get this-
Do we need an agreement with the PD like we would anybody else?
No.
Now, you may have to have with the Safety City, if there's a group and organization, but that's a different issue.
City Department.
Right.
We, we, we-
Yes, sir, we have a motion to, to-
Otherize step.
Authorize the Police Department to utilize the oil mill pavilion for the Safety City project and related. So, matters so moved. I've got a motion, a second. All those, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion, uh, all those opposed, motion carries.
That y'all have a little electric police car that can pull them over?
We actually, we actually are. Typically, everybody that participates kind of donates their cars.
If they stop beyond the white line, I want you to pull the old-
You know, I gotta stop last night from passing the white line. No kidding.
Yes, sir. I want, if you have a good car that looks like a Corvette.
There you go, yes, sir. There'll be one. It'll be nice.
The iconic Harlingen PD Corvette that Commissioner Castillo talked me into was a good idea.
It's a great idea.
We still have it.
It was a good idea. Item 14, consider to take action to approve a lease agreement between the Harlingen Police Department and the mall at Valley Vista LLC, order the lease storefront at Valley Vista Mall for one year. Cost of a dollar per year to operate a police drop-in station.
Right, we've been working with mall management and they've been gracious and they had to give us a, a nice piece of property for, Commissioner Lyle was involved, for a dollar a year. And what we want to do is, it's just another effort to increase our police community partnerships and we're basically gonna staff it often. We plan to have it staffed full-time with volunteers. But we plan to have officers in there as often as we can and, and it just provides an opportunity for the citizens to come in and we're gonna have a kiosk there, so they can certainly make reports or pay, or have phone warrants or ask the police officers questions and, and further, it will help reduce some of the property crimes that we have at the mall. So, we think that's a win-win. We just recently opened, reopened our Jackson Street Drop-In Center as well and we staffed an officer there and we refurbished that entire place as we're doing the mall. And we just think it's a win-win as well.
How big is the space?
A hundred square feet.
A hundred square feet. It's a big space. Has an office in the back and, you know, windows across the whole thing, so we're gonna outfit it and people will know what it is. And again, it'll be a kiosk actually in the mall.
It's, it's on the, on the west side of the mall, Dixieland. There's that, they redid that entrance. They're making it look really nice and modern. Just as you go in, it's on the left side. So, it's right across from the jewelry store, the center court in front of Dilbert's.
They're gonna have a police officer all the time in there?
We're gonna, we're gonna have the, what we call the police area representative there, off, get in there as much as he can be. That's gonna be his office and we also are gonna have our, our metro guys, our traffic accident guys that work that area do all their reports from inside that building. So, we plan to have it staffed often.
And I believe they gave you all 24-hour access to the building?
Yes, sir, they did. They have four parking spaces.
Parking spaces?
Yes, sir.
So, we can use it if we need it, if something happens in the evening, they need to go in there, they have a safe place to go.
Is there a motion to approve the lease agreement?
So moved.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Opposed like a sign. Motion carries. Okay, great. Item 15, board appointments?
Mayor, I want to reappoint James Cags to the library board and R T to do the tennis advisory board.
I got two. I got a reappointment. We're moving in the Harlingen Committee to the board and I got Yessi B B Ariado for the C V V.
Got a reappointment that he's opted to the construction board of adjustments. Jesse Arbus to the Harlingen Community Board, Brad Moberg to Harlingen Housing Authority Board, I think Colin to the Harlingen Housing Authority Board. I thought I had already appointed him, but- I thought I had already appointed him, but maybe not. Sue DeBrueck, Harlingen Brown Advisory Board. Betty Ferris, the library advisory board. Is there a motion to approve board appointments?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Okay, did anybody sign up for citizen communication?
Yes, Mr. David Collins. David Collins.
Okay, let's take that out of order now, and go to item seventeen, citizen communication.
Thank you. I'll make it very, very short. I came over here tonight to thank you for the hard work and dedication you have provided for this community. I, I live at twenty, thirty-one eighteen Clifford Street. I've lived here for fifty-one years with a saint, five children, two of which have